Meeting called to order, the time is seven o'clock. Public portion of the meeting begins. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the rights of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with provisions of this act, the Business Administrator Board Secretary has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building, communicated to the Herald News, the Record, and filed with the clerk of the borough of Hawthorne. Roll call please.
Mr. Carr?
Present.
Mr. Clavijo?
Here.
Mr. Doyle?
Here.
Ms. Aarontrout?
Here.
Dr. Morell?
Present.
Mr. Palus? Mr. Shortway? Mr. Totaro?
Present.
Mrs. Goff?
Here.
Please join me for the flag slip. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Meeting regulations. During each regular meeting, two opportunities are provided for citizens to ask questions and to make comments. During the first opportunity early on the agenda, the meeting is open to the public for the purpose of addressing items listed for approval on this agenda only. The second opportunity occurs just prior to adjournment, when citizens may address any subject matter that is pertinent to and/or directly related to the operation of the school district. Persons wishing to speak must upon being recognized rise, state their name, address, and subject matter. Comments and questions shall be addressed to the board president or the presiding officer, and shall be limited to five minutes per person. The board may or may not respond to issues raised by members of the public at the time they are raised, but will provide a response if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when they speak. Please note the board will not respond to comments regarding students or board employees in light of the privacy rights held by those individuals. Moreover, the board discourages comments about such individuals and will not be responsible for such comments. Members of the public who choose to speak during this public section should carefully consider their comments since they could be held personally liable for any statements they make. Finally, please note that in accordance with district policy, the board will not officially comment or respond to any matter mentioned unless it can confirm the board that the matter has first been brought to the attention of appropriate school personnel in an attempt to resolve the issue. Publicly heard agenda items only. Approval of minutes, May ninth, regular meeting. Public and private, entertain a motion?
Motion. Sir.
Motion by Mr. Carr, seconded by Mr. Totaro, any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Clavijo?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Aarontrout?
Yes.
Dr. Morell?
Yes.
Mr. Totaro?
Yes.
Mrs. Goff?
Yes.
There is no correspondence?
Right, nothing for you, Ms. Dr. Sprito?
Superintendent's report, Dr. Sprito.
Okay, thank you very much. So just a few things I'd like to share with the board and the community tonight. So I'd start with, just as we, I can't believe it's June, but as we close another school year, I just want to thank our administrators, faculty, and staff for their efforts this year. I also want to thank all of our parents for their support throughout the year. As many of you know, we faced numerous challenges this year, and we appreciate those parents who participated in the PTO meetings, our Board of Ed meetings, and other parent nights to provide feedback and suggestions as we work together, administration and parents in our community, as well as the Board of Ed to address those challenges. Going forward, we look forward to our continued partnership with our families as we do our best to ensure the success of all of our students. And the old saying, "It takes a village to raise a child," definitely remains true. I also want to congratulate all of our student athletes who competed in spring sports and to those who are still competing, we still have some students competing in our spring track this coming weekend. We had another very successful season and a successful athletic year evident at our spring sports awards last night. I want to thank all of our coaches and our student athletes for their hard work and dedication to our sports programs, especially to our seniors who we look forward to honoring at our annual senior brunch this Sunday, June 12th. Also in regard to sports, two just highlights, I want to congratulate, and I don't think this was mentioned last night, Ava Ayavino and Luca Lamonica, as they were selected as the HHS or Hawthorne High School recipients of the NJIC Sportsmanship Award this past week. And finally, I'm proud to share in regard to athletics, that Hawthorne be one of four schools in the Colonial Division and one of seventeen schools in the entire NJIC to receive a sportsmanship banner for the 2022-2023 school year, which is always nice to hear that our students are showing good sportsmanship throughout the year. So we're proud of our student athletes, obviously, for what they do throughout the year and for being recognized in this way. Also, as you may be aware, June is Pride Month. So in honor of Pride Month, I asked Mr. Barbosa, our GSA Club advisor, to share some thoughts, which he did last year, so I asked him to share a few thoughts in regard to this year. And I'll just read what he shared with me, he wanted me to share this with the board, he said, "I hope this letter finds you well and in good health and high spirits. I'm writing to express my heartfelt appreciation for the support the Board of Education has shown towards the Gay Straight Alliance and, excuse me, Gay Straight Alliance Club and the LGBTQ+ students within our high school. The presence of the GSA Club has impacted the lives of our students and our school community, but there's still more work to do. The Board of Education's efforts to implement comprehensive policies that address issues such as bullying, harassment, and discrimination have created a safer and more inclusive environment for all students. By actively embracing diversity and promoting tolerance, you have set an inspiring example for our entire school community. Through your dedication, you have empowered countless young individuals to embrace their true selves, pursue their dreams, and thrive academically and socially. Once again, I extend my deepest gratitude to each member of the Board of Education for your invaluable support of the GSA Club in Hawthorne High School. Happy Pride Month, Mr. Barbosa." That's just on behalf of Mr. Barbosa and our GSA Club at the high school. I also want to congratulate, I'm going to show you the video in a second, our peer leaders. So if you remember, a few years ago, our students at the high school won the Passaic County Teen Summit. I'm happy to share that they all won again this year. And I'll just read, give you an overview of what takes place as part of this teen summit. So every year, our peer leaders, which is a group at our high school, attend something called the Passaic County Teen Summit, which is held at William Patterson University and hosted by United for Prevention for Passaic County. At the October conference, twenty-plus Passaic County schools are given a project to work on throughout the year and present it at the follow-up conference in June. The challenge this year was to create a positive, inclusive, and creative thirty-second PSA using the model "Rise Above." The HHS peer leaders took inspiration from the film Rocky and made a thirty-second PSA that focused on persevering through difficult struggles and rising above bad influences. The United for Prevention of Passaic County Award awards the top five PSAs, five hundred dollars in scholarship money for the club, plus in additional five hundred for the overall winner, as decided by the voting members of the organization. Ms. Clifford and Mr. Corvo shared the exciting news this past week that the HHS peer leaders won first place at the 2023 Teen Summit PSA competition, receiving a thousand-dollar scholarship for the club with this PSA. I'm going to share it with you, I just wanted to congratulate, I mean, our peer leaders has a large number of students, I would say approximately fifty students in our peer leaders, but he wanted to congratulate these students who attended the event on behalf of the peer leaders, Maya Mishany, Nicolette Sasso, Valeria Melgar, Sasha Ortiz Calina, and Colin Huffman. So let me just show you, this is their thirty-second PSA. I'll just play this for you.
Rocky is just still up.
So that's their thirty-second PSA. And finally, I want to share this, I received this from New Jersey School Boards, it's called the New Jersey School Boards Association Milestone Award.
Mrs. Goff.
And what it says is, "Please accept and wear this NJPSA pin with pride. It stands for your commitment to promote the achievement of all New Jersey students. Your success has always been NJSPA's mission. For more than a hundred years, we have dedicated ourselves to working to advance public education in New Jersey by adhering to the highest levels of quality professionalism and integrity. Together, we set the highest standards for school board members nationwide." And it's a certificate that says, "New Jersey School Boards Association Milestone Award" to Mrs. Abigail Goff in gratitude for ten years of dedication to the children of Hawthorne, Passaic County, and the state of New Jersey.
Just then.
It's a quarter of my life, it feels like that.
We received that from the school boards today, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Sprito. I feel like we're finally in the Dr. Sprito group, like I'm finally saying it appropriately. Curriculum and Instruction, Dr. Morell.
Pursuant to the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Committee on Curriculum and Instruction recommends the following resolutions. CI one to CI five on page three. CI six through CI eight on page four. CI nine through ATH dash one on page five, on behalf of the Committee, I so move.
Motion.
Moved by Dr. Morell, seconded by Mr. Carr, any discussion?
I have a question. For CI seven in the tuition fees, I know that we probably have very few tuition-paying students, but for the related service line, we don't have PT on there. Would that also be ninety-one an hour? We speech an OT.
I'm not sure. I can certainly do a reservation for PT.
Okay, because also here, he's, I mean, we have someone charging us ninety-five an hour for PT, so I don't know if that would be a different price or probably makes sense just to approve all the related services.
Okay. No problem.
And that is it, any other questions?
Roll call please.
Mr. Clavijo?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Aarontrout?
Yes.
Dr. Morell?
Yes.
Mr. Palus? I'm sorry. Mr. Totaro?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mrs. Goff?
Yes. Personnel, Ms. Aarontrout?
Thank you, President, we're back to a few pages again.
We are, it's that time of the year, this is not a typical.
Right, so the following resolutions are pursuant to the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools. P one through P nine on page six. P ten through P twenty on page seven, which continues on to page eight. P twenty-one through P twenty-three. P twenty-four through P twenty-six on page nine. P twenty-seven through P twenty-nine on page ten. P thirty through P thirty-three on page eleven. On behalf of the Committee, I so move.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Aarontrout, seconded by Mr. Totaro, any discussion?
I do have a few comments. Of course, we always like to welcome the new teachers coming to the district and also wish the best to several that are retiring, especially Coach Shell, Gus Shell. He was my coach and teacher, you know, over twenty years ago, and such a big influence on my life, so I know how much he's helped so many people over the years. So wishing Coach Shell the best in his retirement.
Any other questions?
He was my coach too. Coach Shell's my freshman basketball coach.
I know Excel because of him.
He said, he said for his years as a student and teacher, it's been about fifty years total, that he's been involved in high school. Been a long time.
Big influence, yeah.
Roll call please.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Aarontrout?
Yes.
Dr. Morell?
Yes.
Mr. Totaro?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Clavijo?
Yes.
Mrs. Goff?
Yes.
Finance and Administration, Mr. Clavijo.
Thank you, Madam President. Of Finance and Administration, action items, page eleven, pursuant to the recommendations of the Superintendent of Schools, the Committee on Finance and Administration recommends the following resolutions. On page twelve, F one to F nine. On page thirteen, A one. On page fourteen, A two to A four. On behalf of the Committee, I so move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Clavijo, seconded by Mr. Doyle, any discussion? Roll call please.
Ms. Aarontrout?
Yes.
Dr. Morell?
Yes.
Mr. Totaro?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Clavijo?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mrs. Goff?
Yes. Claims, Mr. Clavijo graciously accepted Mr. Palus's responsibility as EBI.
Yeah, so Anthony did review it, but I also reviewed it as well. CI one, approval of the June 2023 bill list, it is recommended that the board approve the bill list for the month of June 2023.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Clavijo, seconded by Dr. Morell, any discussion? Roll call please.
Dr. Morell?
Yes.
Mr. Totaro?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Clavijo?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Aarontrout?
Yes.
Mrs. Goff?
Yes.
Buildings and Grounds, Mr. Totaro, your student rep is still.
It's all right. Thank you, Madam President. Buildings and Grounds, pursuant to the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools, Committee on Buildings and Grounds recommends the following resolutions. VG one on page fourteen, continuing for the vote on page fifteen, on behalf of the Committee, I so move. Second.
Moved by Mr. Totaro, seconded by Mr. Clavijo, any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Totaro?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Clavijo?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Aarontrout?
Yes.
Dr. Morell?
Yes.
Mrs. Goff?
Yes. Policy, back to you, Dr. Morell.
Pursuant to the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Committee on Policy recommends the following resolution. PO one, on behalf of the Committee, I so move.
Back to you. Moved by Dr. Morell, seconded by Ms. Aarontrout, any discussion?
Roll call please.
Mr. Totaro?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Clavijo?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Aarontrout?
Yes.
Dr. Morell?
Yes.
Mrs. Goff?
Yes. Legislative Committee reports, legislative, Mr. Carr?
Madam President. Excuse me. On June first and fifth, the Senate Committee met to advance bills related to the K-12 education, including a bill that would eliminate the high school graduation proficiency test. First bill would be the extended service life of school buses, A five three two nine, S three seven three four, would extend the service of life of school buses from fifteen to twenty years, while specifying that it does not allow the use of any of the school bus for pupil transportation purposes if that school bus is determined to be unsafe or unfit for pupil transportation. The bill's next sent to the Senate Budget Appropriations Committee for further consideration. NJSPA supports this bill. Elimination of the high school exit exam, Bill A four six three nine, would eliminate the high school graduation proficiency test, which is required in the current law to be taken in the eleventh grade. Specifically, the bill would prohibit the State Board of Education from requiring, as part of the standards for graduation from secondary school, that any secondary school pupil achieve a satisfactory performance on any statewide proficiency test. The bill would also allow adults and out-of-school youth that have not previously been granted a diploma but met all other high school graduation requirements to apply for a state-endorsed diploma. The bill was previously discussed twice in the Assembly Education Committee. NJSPA supports this bill, which next heads the Assembly floor for further consideration. Its Senate counterpart, Bill S three three zero eight, has not yet been scheduled for a committee vote. School Council Requirements, Bill A fifteen sixteen, would establish several requirements related to school council certification and employment. The bill defines the role of the school counselor as someone who recognizes and responds to the need for mental health services that promote social and emotional wellness and development for all students, and is tasked with designing and delivering a comprehensive program for school counseling that promotes the achievement of students. NJSPA supports the bill, now heads to the Assembly Appropriations Committee for further consideration. It's also, its Senate counterpart, Bill S twenty three twenty three, was approved in Committee May of 2022. Sustainable New Jersey Fund, Bill A forty one sixty seven, would establish the Sustainable New Jersey Fund and the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. Under the bill, DCA would be required to annually distribute money into the fund to a public institution of higher education and has an existing contractual relationship with a qualified nonprofit organization that offers certifications and grants to municipalities and public schools across New Jersey in support of efforts to realize environmental, economic, and social sustainability. The public institution of higher education would then be required to distribute the funds to the nonprofit to support the provision of such certifications and grants. NJSPA also supports this bill. I conclude my report.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Mr. Clavijo, Finance Administration and Passaic County School Boards Association.
Thank you, Madam President. The Finance Committee met at six fifteen, right before this meeting. Topics that were discussed was the COPS grant. The COPS grant for a district-wide PA system in radio communication was submitted last month. Determination is anticipated by the end of September. We also got an update on the capital maintenance reserve update. At this, at this time of the year, those year-end balances are being finalized. You'll see a resolution on the agenda that moved the excess surplus from four percent to two percent as a result of us going back to pre-COVID levels. If you recall, prior to COVID, you're allowed to maintain up to a two percent for COVID. They allowed us to keep a four percent across the board for all school districts, but now it's back to that two percent, so those funds are moved out of surplus. We also got an update on referendum. At this point, the referendum projects are winding down. The available funds for the referendum at this point are nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand, forty dollars. Most of these funds are encumbered. If there's anything left available, it'll be determined as to how to best repurpose those funds, assuming they fit within the parameters of of the referendum scopes. That concludes my report for finance, and I have nothing on PCSVA.
Thank you, Mr. Clavijo. Councilees, Ms. Aarontrout?
Thank you, President. Short council review. The last meeting, there was mention of the roller hockey rink improvements. I believe that is still in progress and being discussed, to be continued. At the council meeting tomorrow, the peer leaders' teen summit video will be displayed that we just saw, so it's great that our students are recognized here at the board meeting and then also again by the mayor and the council. And a reminder for Saturday's one hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary celebration at the high school, the show starts at five thirty, there'll be food trucks, entertainment, and fireworks. The mayor's mentioned that in his letters and in the meeting, so hopefully we get a good turnout with the community. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Aarontrout. As far as New Jersey School Boards Association, I did hear from our temporary rep that Mr. Dr. Sprito, I jinx myself, that Dr. Sprito had completed his evaluation and that we would all be getting our own individual logins to complete our evaluations. That being said, I did ask for some clarity from Mr. Fogarty on who is conflicted, because we do have several members of the board who have family members that are within the school system, so we are waiting that. Soon as I hear back, I will let you know so that you don't waste your time filling out the evaluation just to have it not count. Dr. Morell, what is the due date again? We have to have it submitted? July first. July first, okay. So we, we need to do that as soon as we can. It actually has gotten quicker. There were years when it was very cumbersome, I think that they've streamlined it a bit. But Dr. Sprito, I mean, the information he puts in, and if you remember last year, we didn't see a good portion of the information that you put in, so I'm going to, I'm going to go through it this coming weekend and make sure, I mean, he put in a ton of artifacts that, for some reason, we did not see. But I'll go through it and then we can just talk to make sure that everything's easy, because he takes so much time to upload an artifact or several for each point that he puts in there, so it's very time consuming of his end. So we will, we'll get to that as soon as we can. And that is it, as far as the school personnel goes. Dr. Morell, policy and CNI.
May I ask a question back where it is superintendent evaluation? There is a board meeting on June twenty seventh, will we be meeting beforehand, or were you anticipating meeting that day to finalize the evaluation? Or you haven't thought about it yet?
Usually, we would do it like in the executive session of that
Okay.
meeting.
Okay.
And that timeline is actually pretty good, because then we can do it, I can meet with you, and then we can submit it still by July one.
All right.
So yeah, we'll, we'll put that on the agenda for the executive session.
Okay. We, the policy committee didn't meet, Madam President, so I have nothing to report.
Okay. And CNI?
CNI, yes, we met yesterday. We discussed, I really don't know if I'm saying this right, Antomage table?
That's right.
Okay, so I guess the A is, the second A is signed. So I want to say Antomage? So, I don't know. We discussed, the district administration is currently reviewing purchasing an Antomage table in one of our Hawthorne High School science classrooms as perhaps as a component of the referendum. For my fellow board members and the public who are unfamiliar with what an Antomage table is, it's the most technologically advanced 3D anatomy visualization and virtual dissection tool for anatomy and physiology. They can often be found in colleges to help support with viewing anatomy and physiology, whether it's humans or animals. So it's a pretty cool thing to have state-of-the-art if we're able to move forward with it. We also discussed some curricular changes with some new novels being added in the middle school, and we also reviewed our, the summer books, the summer reading books for the middle school, and I believe that information should be going out soon, if it hasn't already, to the students and their families on what the summer reading is supposed to be. Then we also discussed another curriculum item regarding our pacing guides as it relates specifically to our phonics instruction. And as we have purchased a new program for next year called The Wonders, we're looking to align the pacing guide from Wonders along with our Phonics First instruction curriculum program and looking to see, to make sure the date coincided and are embedded within that, The Wonders. We received some preliminary news, and I'm not going to steal the thunder for when this report officially comes out, but we received back our state, I guess you can say that it's, it's the just the raw scores of our students and on the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment, or the NJGPA, which is the test that students take in their eleventh grade year, which meets the assessment requirement. And overall, our students performed very well in the ELA and in the math exams, so we were happy to hear about those results. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Morell. Mr. Palus is not here.
Do have a report, President.
Oh, okay, thank you, Mr. Clavijo.
Sure. CPAC will be donating five thousand dollars to the special education program. Last date to Smith Pull Tabs is June seven. The winning school will receive two hundred dollars. The first-place studio will receive a twenty-five-dollar gift card as well as a certificate of accomplishment. Second and third places will receive certificates of accomplishment as well. Moving on to PTOs, as we come to the end of the 2022-2023 school year, we would like to thank all the executive boards and volunteers that helped each PTO, the Ed Foundation and CPAC through this past school year. Thank you for everything you have done for the district and this community. You've heard it a thousand times, "It takes a village to raise a child." Thank you for being a positive part of this village. That concludes Mr. Palus's report.
Thank you so much, Mr. Clavijo. Buildings and Grounds, Mr. Totaro?
Thank you, Madam President. Buildings and Grounds Committee met yesterday, June fifth, and the following hours were discussed, the meeting. High school, the lockers, the high school, we will begin removing all of the lockers, the main hallway.
Uh, high school, uh, the lockers, the high school, we will begin removing all the lockers, the main hallway on the first floor, directly at the end of the school year. We will then be installing the sheetrock and painting, and this wall is going to be used for the athletic fall of fame and sports awards. Uh, at the athletic field, there are four new bleachers that have been ordered, uh, which we anticipate them coming, uh, over the next four to six weeks. Upon arrival, we will then schedule the installation. The asphalt pa- uh, patching started today. We, uh, will be patching Jefferson, then I believe Roosevelt and the athletic field. We anticipate this work being completed, uh, fairly quickly. Um, and moving on to Roosevelt, we are, starting on June twenty-sixth, we'll begin the replacement of the ceiling grid and the tile, uh, by the first-floor main hallway. And then lastly, uh, the high school again fencing and goalposts. We'll be starting the install on the goalposts, I believe it's June twenty-eight, and then followed by, uh, the fencing installation, which will begin, I believe it's July first, which is that Saturday. And that concludes my report.
Mr. Tosharo, pardon me if it was mentioned last month, but we also removed the three trailers from the high school athletic complex.
Oh, yes, thank you, bring that up, yes. Which, if you're down there, you can...
Makes a big difference.
Pretty easily you see the difference with those trailers.
There were two, um, underneath the bleachers that were old and decrepit, for lack of a better adjective. And there was even the one that was painted nicely, was in a bit of ruin. So they were removed, we replaced the two under the bleachers. Um, we're, we're trying to do what we can before graduation.
Madam President, I have a question for Mr. Tosharo. Um, the bleachers, are those for visitors or for, are, are... Sorry.
So, yeah, I can address it. So the, the bleachers that are on the visitor's side along the, uh, hockey rink, as well as along the baseball field. So we have replaced a few of those, we, this year.
I think three or four.
Yeah, and there's, there's about four left that are old and really not in great condition. So we're gonna replace the existing, whatever's left, we're gonna obviously discard the old ones, replace those with new ones. So they'll be on the visitor's sideline, as well as along the baseball field for the baseball team.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And they are movable?
Yes.
Any other questions? Public be heard. At this time, members of the public may ask questions or make comments on educational issues. Please remember that to keep them to five minutes.
Can you just raise your hand, grab them, sorry?
Yeah, you, come on up. And then just sign your name and your address. Um, is there a sign machine here? Yes, just state your name and address, and also sign.
My name is David Neve, I'm a one-sixty-three veteran. Excuse me, I'm here, um, regarding the trees along the high school property line, Dr. Spriedo and I have gone over a lot. Um, long story short, we got the arborists to come out, the arborists deemed them healthy trees, which they do. And said that they don't pose any danger or any, to anybody. This is the letter and copies of pictures we're gonna show you. That's what my driveway looks like, from the street going up the driveway, from the trees we're talking about. That's what it looks like going down the driveway. Mr. Corvino is still in person. That's my garage, with that big oak tree behind it. If you look close enough, and I can picture better pictures, my garage is starting to lean towards my neighbor's house. That's the floor inside the garage. It's another shot of the driveway out front.
And Mr. Neve, you're the neighbor right next door to the, uh, to the, to the parking lot in the high school.
That's correct, that's correct, okay. And then this is showing one of the bricks out in front of my house, the whole slab's getting lifted up by another roof, which is under my porch, and probably getting very close to my foundation. The roots were not addressed by the arborists. I believe he was speaking of tree branches and things of that nature, okay? Um, I can't just tear up my driveway and tear up the roots, because that's gonna cause problems. The trees are actually gonna die, and they're really gonna have a hazard on their hands. For the record, I love the trees. They give me the great shade for my yard and everything, but this is getting really bad in my property. It's actually pretty dangerous. I mean, my kids wiggle and waggle when they go down the driveway on their bicycles. That's pretty much it. We can go on to more needy, but I need to do something about it. Especially the one out front that's really getting close to my foundation and the leaning garage. I can't fix a leaning garage and build it on top of an unstable situation. Same thing for me doing the driveway. I can't do that in an unstable situation, where just surface cover the top of it, and then in two years, I'm gonna have to redo it again. And then in ten years, it's gonna be like two feet high. So, I realize it's a major inconvenience, but it is for us as well, and it's having a major effect on us.
Mr. Neve, when did you buy the home?
About fifteen years ago.
And I'm assuming that it wasn't this way when you purchased the home?
No, not at all. Just progressively got worse every year. And I'm sure the, the photos will give a little better depiction, but it's just, it's that one large tree? Since... No, there's a lot of them. Those are more than one.
The name is...
Mr. Tosharo, it's the, the faculty parking lot along the side of the high school, and the trees that line that, and the adjacent holes. So there's like a space about, you know, that way.
And I'll welcome anyone anytime they wanna come for, you know, a walk-through. It's just, it's only gonna get worse to the bottom line, something's gotta happen.
Have you had your own person come to evaluate the trees?
I had a friend who was an arborist who didn't wanna rival the town arborist. So he didn't wanna do it officially, but he told me that's a major problem. It's definitely coming from those trees. And he's also the one who said, he's up on tearing up the roots and paving the driveway.
And the trees do work as a barrier between your property?
That's the other thing, too. You have shade, the barrier, I mean, it's great, but I mean, unfortunately, something's gotta give sooner or later, you know? I mean, I had one behind my garage, it's a tree growing a tree for a branch, so I think it's huge.
I know that we had the arborists a lot, but do we ever have anybody talk about the cost of removing them all? Does anybody else have any other question for Mr. Neve?
I, I'm Mr. Neve, I just wanna be sure I understand what, um, you are requesting. You're requesting for the removal of all the trees?
Unfortunately, I mean, as far as I know, that's really the only option. Unless the arborist wants to sign off on saying that these roots can be dug up without there posing a problem. But to my understanding, the trees, that's a lot of roots. You know, they take a root a tree twenty-five percent of the time, max. So you're looking at half the roots. And for anybody that doesn't know this, the roots under the ground, the dumbbell effect that we talked about, remember? The roots under the ground go out about as far as the tree branch is gonna go. So if you look at that one out front, that plus the slab, there's branches all the way over the roof of my house and then some, and they've been cut down for use. So I can only imagine how much underneath stuff is going on.
How many trees are we talking about?
Big picture, probably a lot of them, if you're looking at every possible ripple, there's two in particular, as you say, it seems like two. That, that are really big, but there are a bunch of small ones along the way that, again, if anyone wants to come, I can point out to you in the picture, they're just creating ripples everywhere across my driveway. So I mean, I could even sell my house right now if I wanted to, if we'd pipe, you know? We might be... Yeah?
Mr. Corvino, do you have a question?
Do we know if when, and I, I know it's not proper, but if the, when the arborists do come out, do they take a look at the roots? Do they assess that, or is it just a health of the tree?
He, he didn't, I, I don't, he didn't look at the roots, I don't believe. He just looked at the trees, the health of the trees. I don't think he addressed anything.
Yeah, I can go by Dr. Spriedo's letter, but they didn't reference anything about the roots.
No, I don't think he looked at any of the roots. I think he was just assessing the trees and stuff.
I mean, it's, it's a lot of things in a lot of places that he told me, I assume, from a lot of trees. I mean, that's a big, heavy slab of concrete in front of my house, and it's lifted up a couple inches higher, the rest split in half, right down the middle.
Are any of the trees within the twelve-feet street line? Which would be at that point, rural?
There's also ripping stuff up, too. Even the little ones are doing a job, to be honest.
Is that would be a joint rural?
The bigger ones back where they...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, I don't know if that one's necessarily twelve feet, but there's more towards the front of the driveway that, um, are basically doing the same thing. They're a little bit on the smaller side, but the tree in that picture is the one that's, in my opinion, that's definitely the one that's lifting up the sidewalk for sure. So you guys can hang out to eat if it helps, anyway, and I got that.
We'll keep them, thank you. I, I mean, obviously, I don't think you came here looking for an answer tonight, but we appreciate the information and, and, um, I mean, we can speak with our attorney. Sure. I mean, I have been in the parking lot, so I am familiar.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I have been in the parking lot, so I am familiar with, with your location.
Yes. Photos definitely help, give it better depiction from your side, you know, see that.
The interior garage photos, obviously, we cannot see that.
There's more than that, that's just the biggest one I took. It's so big, I got a family of chipmunks living.
They're happy.
Yeah, they are, too, right? Well, cats in the neighborhood, they do.
Well, you sit in prison, pictures don't necessarily do justice, right? Yeah, it's kind of self-evident, yeah.
I mean, we can talk about, I mean, I don't know if this is Buildings and Grounds Committee?
Yeah.
Will we have committee meetings again in...
I'm sure, it's in the hall.
Okay. We do have another meeting at the end of June, the twenty-seventh.
Okay.
Um, and we can talk about this in committee, um, to get some more clarity.
So that's an open meeting, you're saying I should come back?
The twenty-seventh, yeah, uh, or we can, you know, someone from, with Dr. Spriedo, someone can communicate. You don't have to come back. Um, but the next time we meet as a board to talk about it, in committee, would be the twenty-seventh, uh, probably don't be before, twenty-sixth?
Oh, the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, before then. So before the twenty-second.
Okay, great.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for these. Any other comments? Please write, state, state your name and address in.
All right. Pretty new at this, so you have to bear with me a little bit, let me, uh, fill this out. Some of you know me as, uh, Coach Carl. I've been a resident of, uh, Hawthorne. So, let me fill it. Okay, all right, let me, let me get started here, all right. Good evening, board. Some of you, uh, some of you already know me, uh, as Coach Carl. I've been a resident of Hawthorne now for ten years. I've been, I've been a volunteer coaching the Boys Club, and, um, for the last eight years. Uh, the past few years, we've noticed a increase in the number of minor incidences in the town by, uh, by, you know, those. At the same time, we've seen an increase in any social behavior. Results in negative interactions with the public, altercations with minors, and incidents of crime. Uh, we need to provide a, provide our children with something to do and a place to go. That is why we are, we're considering a petition signed by dozens of parents to open up the gym and our schools for three hours, uh, during the day, or four hours, actually, four hours during the day. From ten AM, uh, to four, one point. Can you get this ready? So during the day after school, all right, from, uh, from three to six, six PM. And then on the weekends, from ten to five PM. We have gone to, we have also... So, this is, this is what I'm, all right? I can't read this.
Let's go, go off, add it, just go off the grab, do you?
I've been volunteering for over ten years, all right, and right around eight years or so, and, um, I only hope that I've affected some of the kids in this town and keeping them out of trouble. One of the things that I wanted to, and I've been talking to the committee, I wanna get the gyms open to keep these kids out of trouble. All right, um, I, I understand it, it's a budget thing. And I know it's a very difficult thing for the town to do. But I think that if we can get these kids in a gym, work on their B C, their self-esteem, uh, stop this bullying, stop some of the interactions of down being downtown, getting in trouble, I think this would really help them out a lot. I think it'll help the town. That's pretty much it, coming from me. It's all about the kids for me, so I don't have any kids in the system. And so, uh, it just needs a lot of seed improvement, and, so, thank you.
Thank you, Coach Carl.
Hello? Everyone? I'm hopefully, uh, one of six, Neatland Avenue. So, I love being here with Carl tonight, but, uh, usually, uh, my team is first in his team, which is usually not the greatest outcome for, for my team. So I see him in the, in the gym, on the other side, you, we know we're in for a fight. Um, and then of course, draft night, which is a big night, I mean, we play for draft night for weeks, like, this, this is a big deal. This is a huge job. I've been coaching, um, at the Boys and Girls Basketball since my son was, uh, first or second grade. So, uh, he absolutely loves it, and I fallen absolutely in love with it, and coached cell with my soccer coach also. So that was my sport, but basketball is just, um, oh my goodness, it's so much fun. And so, um, it was draft night, and you know, there's Carl, and of course Carl's got the eye. Carl's is amazing, I'm like, oh, he got that one. Ooh, he got that one, too. So, he describes enough everybody, but, uh, every kid wants to be on, on Coach Carl's team. Um, but at the end of the draft night, um, I got talking with Carl, and you know, he's just like, I just want the kids to play. I just want them to play. His passion is, is, is unparalleled to anything I've ever seen. Um, these kids play for him, they work for him, and what he brings out in them is unbelievable, absolutely unbelievable. I mean, anybody, it doesn't matter what team or not. You cut, he walks in, he sees you're doing something wrong, he's, he, he helps every kid out. I mean, he's, to my, he's helping me out with, uh, with, with, with my players. You know, we were battling him the next night, he was there at the practice for helping out, so he will help any child at any time. He just loves the game, and once again, he gets them to love it, too, because his passion is completely contagious. Um, so Carl, Carl had this idea, he's like, I just want a gym. Give me a gym, I'll fill it with kids, I'll teach them how to play, I'll work them hard. They work for him, they do push-ups for him, they get down on the floor, they work for him. He goes, I'll get him in shape. And he says, I will, you know, once again, um, help them find, uh, find a love of basketball. And he's really already there, and he just really brings it out, and it's truly amazing what he does. Now, I, we had many conversations with Carl, and his story is so inspiring. Um, growing up in New York City, uh, Carl mentioned that, um, sorry, I'm gonna get a little emotional, but that the open gyms in the city were what saved him as a, as a child, and what made him the man he is today, and the, and the men that were there, um, coaching him, made him the man that he is today. And that is what he's doing for our, our youth. I see it. See it every day. I mean, you can just, you can hear it in his voice, you can just, he commands an audience, and these kids just work for him so much. So Carl's like, hey, do you know anybody? I'm like, I don't know, I might know a few people. He's like, you do? I go, yeah, let's, you know, so let's get together and let's make this happen. And myself and Jeff Carney could be here today, and multiple parents, um, players, um, and their parents, we've all been discussing and talking about it, and we're really all behind this. And an opportunity to open up, um, one or two of the schools in the afternoon, we can fill it with volunteers. We will be there for the kids, giving them a space to play. And basketball just unites really all of the kids, really, really does. It's, it's just a space. And of course, we would, um, we would take care of everything, as Carl says, we're gonna, we would make it cleaner than, than the way we came in. And that's how we would run something like that. So if there's space, if there's time, if there's any way that we could work together and make this happen, I mean, we'll get the kids, and we'll keep them, and we'll keep them there, and we'll get them working, and we'll get them moving, and we'll get them energized, and we'll, you know, get them part of the team. Um, it's beautiful. I, I teach middle school in, uh, in, in Clifton. And what's great about the, the Boys and Girls program that they have for the kids, they compete against each other. So they get to talk about it all day in school, right? Oh, who's going to play, who's, who are you up against tonight? It's, it's, it's really so exciting for them. So for them to be able to play and, you know, stay fit and get into shape and learn about the game, and then want to continue to play in high school, and want to dedicate themselves to improving their... and want to dedicate themselves to improving their health, and to improving themselves as a player, it's so important. And the time they have to spend together with each other, they would beg us for more time, can you get more time, can you get more time? So I know Carl and I were always waiting for gym time, and we would call the Boys and Girls, like, could we get in, could we get in any more time? We would get like two, one one to two nights a week for practice, and when games started, uh, there wasn't even any time or any room for us there either, so the kids would just beg us, so we would meet them at, you know, LMS, we'd build the basketball courts there, we'd, we'd find the courts, we would run in the track, we'd get them running and exercising, we were doing things, you know, well, uh, when we couldn't be inside, we were doing things outside too, but there was something about being, being in that space. But, um, it's, um, you know, and they would just, they would just beg, beg, beg for more time, we ju, and would, they wouldn't leave, it was really cute, because some of the kids would show up, and they weren't on my team, and then they, they weren't on Carl's team, but they kind of walked into the gym, and they'd be like, oh, I was kind of standing around there, you know, and I'm like, did you want to practice with us? And they're like, yeah, you know, and then their faces would line up, they would just show up every night of the week, and hope that one of the coaches would let them practice them, and of course, we'd be back, but that just shows that they would have been there every day to play. I'm sorry, I may have gone over time, I just got more passionate about this, but if, uh, we would love to work with you, if you could, if we could work on something, think of something. Um, uh, we're open ears, and we're excited and energized and ready to do this for the kids, and I think it would be a win-win for all of us. Thank you for your time.
I do have a couple of questions. Yes, okay, sure, um, so are you, does it, are you intending to run it through the Boys and Girls Club?
Um, well, we were hoping, um, they'll have, um, the space, well, um, I mean, that's where, that's where we have been working before, but you know, this would be sort of an open gym for the kids, so we would do, Carl's vision would be more, uh, training, probably open gym pickup games, what would you say, Carl?
Well, the problem with the Boys Club is that, no, I wouldn't want to run it through the Boys Club.
Okay.
I would like to initially, I would like to go either through, I guess, Lincoln Middle School or Roosevelt, because of the gym size.
It's, just logistically, it's easier to run through another party, because if you, then you'd have to, I mean, people who work for the district, it gets sticky with employees of the district, you have to have certain clearances to work with children, but if you're coming through the Boys and Girls Club, you can apply, use the space, am I, am I missing anything?
No, you're not, um, listen, I, let me just start by saying, I think, I, I, I love the idea, and I love your passion about it, I think it's awesome. I could tell you the only logistical challenge that I see at the middle school, um, like, that gym gets used quite a bit after school for our teams, and not so much in the fall, in the winter, obviously, we have our own basketball team, our wrestling team. So it depends on what time of year, that's, that's just one challenge. Roosevelt, I could tell you, they use that, um, like, I know the town uses it for indoor soccer and things of that nature, so that could be one of the challenges that you'll face, just, just, you know, timing, right, just being able to, being able to fit it in with other organizations that use the gyms. Believe it or not, they're used more than you realize, um, I mean, our high school, uh, very much throughout the year, I mean, whether it's volleyball, basketball, uh, wrestling, there's a million different things, but, so that's one issue, the other, you mentioned, like, our board policy in terms of who can use the spaces, there are certain restrictions, and we can, we can look at that a little more closely to see how that, how something like that might be able to work out, uh, because there are restrictions on who can use it, uh, whether there's fees associated, you know what I mean, so, but that's something that, you know, that's just a policy that the board and the district has in regard to using any space, not just a gym, any space at all. So, um, but listen, I, I, I appreciate, you, believe it or not, you coached my son, who's a senior now, at the Boys and Girls Club, Coach Carl, so he may not remember him, but he, he played for you many years ago, he's at now Senior High School. So, uh, so I, I, I can attest to, to what you've done with kids, because I saw it firsthand, so, um, so I appreciate, you know, what you're offering here tonight, and I don't think it's a bad idea, I can tell you, even in our town committee, uh, there's a town committee that was formed, uh, a few months ago, and one of the conversations was, what could we provide for these kids after school to keep them occupied, to your point?
So one of the things that I do is re-clock every day, uh, is I actually go down to, uh, I guess, the Bagel Express, and I park, and all of the kids that walk through that I know, and I see them starting to do something, if they see me, I tip my hat, or I tip my glasses, and they look, and then they keep walking, and they don't get in any trouble. So, you know, and I heard that a few weeks ago, that, uh, there were, there were some incidences near the library. So I would go over there and park, and they know my truck, and they keep, they know more trouble. So, the, the thing is with, with a school, or if there's some kind of way that this can happen, you know, I really would appreciate it, because it would really help all of the kids, and, um, they, they need it, you know, uh, what I didn't like a few years ago, I was volunteering at, at the Boys Club, and some of the parents didn't like, because their kids were losing, so they didn't want to play North Keldon anymore. To me, they weren't getting the full lesson, life, you gotta play, you gotta play the game. So, this is where an open gym, an instruction every day, you know, you just keep hitting that hammer.
Our building use forms are online, if you guys want to take a look at them, there's still, so if you want to take a look at it and see what the criteria would be, and, and you can certainly, you know, once an idea is firmed up under what they do it, this nonprofits, there's a fee if you're a for-profit organization, which is why I asked if you were going through the Boys and Girls Club.
Oh, right, okay.
So, just take a look at the criteria for the building use form, it's right on our website, and then maybe that'll give you a clearer picture, and that can help to, to figure out some of more of the logistics. Also, our policy on buil, on building use is that, that's online as well, our policies are online. If you guys want to do some, just of that, and then, I mean, there's not a person up here who doesn't want to see something like this happen, I mean, I have a seventh grade daughter, um, so, and it takes a village, and we are so happy to have people come and, and offer ideas, but it's just sort of the figuring out how to work it in. But yeah, the, the building use form is, is definitely.
It's called the application for use of school property, that's, there's a good thing to look at, and just get an idea of what, what that would entail, and what would require.
Yeah.
Um, real, just real quick, Coach Carl, thank you, uh, you also coached my son, he's a senior in college now. I, I, I know the passion that you, you, you bring to what you're stating here this evening, and I still remember vividly the learning lessons that they picked up on the basketball court, but just a suggestion, knowing the challenges that we're facing with a certain demographic of youth right now, um, in that area of the community that seems to be mostly affected, is there any possibility, and I'm just throwing it out there, did you happen to possibly reach out to St. Anthony's just for the location of the gym, coming from middle school, I don't know, again, I don't want to speak at school, but.
Right, sure, I, I know, uh, Haskill, New Jersey, they reached out to, uh, once again, Carrington's not unique, as we all know, every district is like, okay, these kids need somewhere to go, so they did open up one of their, um, of the Catholic school in their, uh, the Catholic, um, church in their town, did open up their gym, and they were able to make that work. Um, I wasn't sure, right, I wasn't, I think we went to, you guys first, consider you first. I'm not sure if St. Anthony's has like an after-school program, and they use their gym, I wasn't sure about that either, but.
And the Boys and Girls Club does have a full team center that does not get used, as far as I know, they built it, and I'm not sure it was ever really utilized.
Sure, what they're using after school, I, I think, I think we use it for aftercare program, I'm not sure.
But logistically, if we're looking at kids going from the middle school to a gym within around the corner, rather than going all the way down to the Boys and Girls Club.
Oh, right, yes, yes, St. Anthony's.
The allure would be much easier for them.
Yeah, yeah.
One of the things about the Boys Club is, you know, in the economic times that we're in now, it's kind of pay to play.
Yeah.
All right, and so, we need to get away from that a little bit, all right, um, you know, the families are already struggling.
Right.
You know, things are the way they are today, so, uh, if there's some kind of free program for the kids to play, then it's a level playing field for all of, you know, all concerned, so, uh, I really just wanted to get away from that, because when you look at athletics today, if your kid is, if the parent doesn't have money, all right, they can't join an AAU team. If they're any good, they can't afford to travel.
Yeah.
All right, so, he can be great, but he can't accept funds, all right, so that disqualifies the kid if he's really good later on, if he goes to college, all right, so if it's, if it's a program that all can, you know, be involved in, then it doesn't hurt them on the back end.
Yeah.
So, um, so that's why, you know, I was thinking maybe it would be best if it was, you know, free.
Yeah, I, I mean, obviously, logistically, that means who's going to supervise it, and if it's a school employee, we have to pay, I mean, it, there are a lot of questions to be answered, um, and, and it would have to be someone approved by the school, if they're in the school, like, if they're not operating under another umbrella title, or if you're your own entity and you want to be a 503(c), I mean, it's going to take some legwork, but I definitely think that, again, there's not a person up here who doesn't think that something like that would be wonderful. So if you guys want to take a look at the paperwork, maybe we can even reach out to our county people and see if anybody's doing anything like this on their, you know, in their district, um, and we can, we can put all of our minds together and try and figure something out. The, the form is long, I'm not going to lie, it's a Google sheet, it's a Google form, so.
I just want to clarify, because sometimes our, our website's not the best to navigate, um, even I, right now, went searching for it, but I found it, it's under our district heading. And it's the second one, it says, "Application for Use of School Property."
Okay, okay.
Sorry, I just, I have to look for it, because I didn't know where it was.
Sure, sure, I appreciate it.
We are working on the website too.
Okay.
We have, we are also, we are also troubled sometimes with that thing.
Sure, we'll figure it out.
Um, and then the, the policy for, policies are right on the main tab, if you want to look at the policy card, but really, just go look at that, the use form, that'll give you a clear idea of, you can put in a use form for any of the buildings.
Okay.
Rooms, fields.
Right.
And the gyms, and then we have a master calendar, and if, you know, it could be a year-long thing, everyone's, whatever it is, but you have to be associated with some sort of nonprofit entity, or if you're working, you know, if it's a district thing, we have to, we would have to conference. It's just going to be a little tricky, but not saying that it's not something that, you know, everybody up here very much wants to find something, anything.
Well, that's exciting, that's super exciting, all right, we will, we will try to navigate the forms as we can.
Look at the form, look at the form on your end, we'll do some recon on our end.
Okay.
If you want to come to the next meeting, it's the twenty-seventh, um.
And it's policy seventy-five-ten.
Seventy-five-ten, okay, thank you guys.
Our use of school facilities.
Thank you, and, yeah, it, it.
Homework and homework.
Homework and homework, and, right, if, right, if we could figure it out, we, we wouldn't, um, we, obviously, we wouldn't expect any compensation from the parents, you know, we've got a budget.
But it would involve some sort of, I'm assuming, background, I mean, it, it depends, it depends on how you're going to title the entity that is coming in.
Okay.
Just don't let the legwork steer you away from it, there might be hurdles, like, even if you may have to create that entity that's a 503(c), right? Maybe there's things that, you know, coming at it from a different approach, but I commend the intent, and conceptually, it sounds like it's well-needed, um, uh, for the town, and I, I just commend you for even putting yourselves forward in that way.
If struggle builds strength, don't give up.
All right, thank you, we'll, we'll see you at the next meeting, and, uh, all right, we got our, we'll, we'll, we're going to do our homework.
And if you can't find the form, or you can't find the policy, please, email the board address.
I totally, I totally will.
They're there, but.
All right, thank you so much.
Thanks, guys.
Oh, my name is, uh, River Foley, and I live in 106 Mainland Avenue. I'm a second grader at LMS, I've been playing basketball in the Boys and Girls Club since first grade, as soon, as soon to be eighth grade. I can tell you that basketball season is my favorite time of year, being able to play against and with my classmates is such an amazing opportunity. The only problem is, we wish we had more time. My mom and Coach Carl begged for more time to practice, we took any opportunity for gym time, we even practiced in the freezing cold outside. Speaking on behalf of my fellow classmates, I'm representing them today, and asking you for your consideration for open gym time, so we can improve our game and stay in shape, and also, time with our friends. Personally, I would love the opportunity to be coached by Coach Carl, no offense, mom, thank you for the time and consideration.
Great job.
Good job, Sam.
I might need to coach me too.
This is my first meeting.
Oh, yay! We love visitors, we're often here alone.
Uh, my name's Mary Beth Koma, and I live at 12 Metro Vista Drive. I'm not very good off the cusp, so I had to write down on my phone.
I get it, crazy, I'm getting a hold of it.
Good evening, as I mentioned, my name is Mary Beth Koma, and I live at 12 Metro Vista Drive. I'm the parent of two children, my son Ben is currently a first grader at Jefferson, and I also have a four-year-old daughter. My son has had a wonderful two years at Jefferson, but we have been extremely happy with the education he has received thus far. As an educator myself, who has worked as a school counselor for the past fifteen years in the District of Burton County, and typically someone who trusts with our schools, are making the best educational decisions for all of our children. I, however, felt I needed to come tonight to express my concern as a parent about the decision to combine the two classes into one large second-grade black class that is projected to be thirty students, according to the letter I received for next year. I understand that more classroom space is needed for special education students at Jefferson. However, I keep coming back to the question of how is this the best decision, educationally, socially, and emotionally for children? I have to say, I'm a little bit disappointed in the lack of transparency in this decision. I have a few questions regarding this new model for the next two to three years for these incoming second, as well as third grade classrooms. What other options have been presented or explored prior to coming to this decision of combining these classes? Is this co-teaching model in second and third grade being implemented across all grades of elementary school, or just Jefferson? What other districts has Hawthorne researched, researched, or conducted site visits at that have found success with this model and this grade model? The letter that was sent to parents stated that both second-grade teachers are also special, special education certified. Will the class be considered an in-class resource, resource classroom? If so, how will this model provide the necessary resources and differentiation needed in a class with this level of needs and the large number of students? And lastly, is there a plan in place if there are new students who enroll over the summer? Is there a cap as to the number of students that are allowed in a classroom? I don't expect answers to all of these questions tonight, or even at all, um, I just wanted to express my concern, uh, as a parent, so thank you very much for your time, and for all the work that you do for our children.
We can answer some.
Well, here's what I would suggest, if you don't mind, I know Dr. Drosky's going to be presenting on this topic tomorrow at VTO meeting. So I would suggest that you go to that meeting, and here, he's going to discuss, he's going to be able to answer a lot of those questions.
I can't get there tomorrow, because I've had to bring two things, because.
Then here's, here's another suggestion, because I know other parents have done the same, just contact Dr. Drosky, he'll be happy to be with you privately, or even talk to you on the phone, whatever you'd like.
Okay.
Um, and he can answer a lot of those questions for you, and that's, um, not that I, you know.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand.
He'd be happy to, to do that, I can tell you that this is something that we've talked about, uh, it's not something that just kind of came up, and we just said, oh, we're sending a letter out about it, we've had numerous discussions about it.
Right.
Discussions with the teachers, we, we shared it with our CNI committee of, of our Board of Education. But it, but again, I think the best option is talk to him, because he can lay out exactly
Okay.
what it's going to look like, he even offered to show the classroom space, because there are large classroom spaces uh, that they're going to be using at Jefferson, so I'm sure he'd be willing to do the same for you, to share, to show you the space and talk more about.
But, Miss Koma, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I just want you to know that there is a board member who has a daughter in that same section. So, there is a lot of personal skin in the game, so it, it is not a decision that was, you know, made in a vacuum. Additionally, I, I think we can confidently say that if someone were to move into the district, we don't do the neighborhood school thing anymore.
Right.
So unless they live, like, on top of Jefferson, I, I, I'm fairly certain it would be, they would be put.
So we, so that class currently, and my niece is actually in that class as well, so, so I understand what you're saying, um, but. So we, so that class currently, and my niece is actually in that class as well, so, so I understand what you're saying, um, uh, but there's currently five Roosevelt students district, or District of Roosevelt in that class, so, um, I mean, my, to your point about not, but we do close classrooms in other cla, other buildings, and that's sometimes why they end up at Jefferson or Washington, because those class sizes are large, and we say we don't have room in those room, in those classes, and we'll shift them to another building, so. So again, but I, I, I would strongly encourage you to reach out to Dr. Drosky, because he can go through that, all of those questions that you had. He'll be able to answer all of them, have a discussion about what the class is gonna look like, what the structure of the class is going to be, all of it, he can go through all of it with you. And if you have additional questions after that, feel free to reach out to him.
Okay, thank you, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I believe it is gonna be virtual, too.
Yeah, yeah.
But if he can't make it, just, just contact Dr. Drosky, he'll be with you privately.
Okay, great, thank you.
Hello, Erica Malpecolson, two thirty-six Lockwood. So my son also had Coach Carl, who was a wonderful coach, and I think all of our kids have liked Coach Carl over the years. Um, I think it's a great idea what they're proposing, there is a, um, because my kids go to it, an after-school program run through Hawthorne Community School in the Roosevelt Gym Now. During those times, I'm sure you're aware.
Yeah, it's, yes.
Three sets that we're paying for, and then obviously, the Roosevelt Club runs their after-school program, and then the middle school also has an after-school program.
No other boys are going to.
Right, so I understand how the gym is always packed and full, but it's a great idea. So I would definitely be willing to volunteer and help, maybe like the co-op thing, where certain parents, there's a lot of educators that are already, um, fingerprinted that could volunteer time, like a set, set of parents that are allowed to go in just for thought.
That was the big, sorry, that was the biggest challenge, was that town committee identifying the space, that, you know, the will was there, but identifying the space really is the, seems to be the biggest challenge.
St. Anthony's is a great idea, just because of the location, I have a son who's eighth grade this year, there's been so many fights outside of the library and Brighted, and it's been going on since they came back from the pandemic. People, people posted on Facebook, like, that's not a video, like, that's not helping anything, so I commend you guys for trying to do something, anything I can do to help, and I'm sure many middle, middle school, especially, parents would, um, you know, help out and volunteer their time. Um, I had a question about the, uh, two vendors that are on here for tonight, for power professionals.
Yes.
Their bids or their group?
So, so we put out our, our request for proposals, they have to submit those proposals, we review them, uh, to make sure they meet the requirements of what the, the request is, and then we award those bids, uh, to, and in this case, to vendors that we approved tonight, maybe the same for this past year.
Yep, I, I thought I saw on, on last month's meeting, too, as well, for power professionals, they strict, maybe, or, a, a private company.
I think now we're just approving all the companies that we've worked with.
Yes.
On last month's.
Yeah, that was more of just.
I didn't want to, at least because the kids were there and stuff.
That's okay, that's okay, this is specific to those two companies to provide powers as needed in this district.
No, you read my mind, because you know I ask this every meeting, that I see this, so these are just if we need someone, um, if, uh.
It's a security blanket, if you want to call it that, we don't say it that way, right, so if we need, and we can't find our own, we, listen, we prefer to hire our own powers.
The phrase of this is astronomical.
That, that was gonna be my comment, is.
Yeah.
Sorry?
No, we, we, we are looking to hire our own power professionals, that's the goal, and we have hired more powers for our own districts, which is reducing the number of contracted people through these companies, and that's, ideally, we don't want to use these companies, ideally, um, but unfortunately, if we don't have the people necessary to support our students in school, then we need to find alternative options. And that's really what this is.
And I understand we have to follow IPs or legal documents, it just kills me, and I, you guys are aware of this, I'm preaching the choir, but sixty to seventy dollars per hour
I know.
for a power professional that we're paying eighteen to twenty dollars.
Well, the pair is not seeing that money, but that's what the third party company, yes, yes.
Paying the management, yes. So are we only paying per power, per hour, let's say, or day that we're using, or is it like, every month, it's four thousand dollars, whether we use ten or one?
Oh, no, I'm sure.
Does that make sense? So it's, it's like a sub, we only pay what we use, right?
Yeah.
Okay, that, I, I didn't know how that, like, we're paying just his.
A flat rate, or something.
No.
No.
Okay, um, and last comment, sorry, um, last thing, it was our spring sports award, it was a really nice event, the seniors, I, I think they were honored really nicely, I was disappointed that there was a group of, um, kids left out, I think. Uh, I felt bad for them, um, because they worked really hard for this, it was like lacrosse, because of COVID, these kids, you know, signed up, I think my son put in, like, two days, COVID hit, lacrosse was done, but he still got his four years, and it, and it was mentioned, you know, that he would have been there every single day, working his bum off if COVID didn't ruin everyone's lives, and I really appreciated that he got his four-year varsity letter for lacrosse specifically, even though we didn't actually play any games that year, so I appreciate that. Um, but, that being said, uh, I felt bad for the seniors who weren't recognized, who didn't get that four-year, um, letter, I think it was for, uh, baseball, and they should have. It should be equal across the, the whole spring, all spring sports, I guess is the right way to say it. And then also, our senior night for lacrosse was super disappointing, um, my son never stepped on the field, other than to be on the sideline. And my whole family came, hopefully doesn't watch the board bed meetings, but, uh, and it was disappointing, his whole family was there, there was an issue after, you're aware of, and I was just bummed, because that's it, he's done, you know, he's spent all twelve years, actually more, I'm confused, um, in Hawthorne School Districts, and, uh, he's going on to be Diesel McKinnick, H.B., so I'm very proud of that, that is a product of fourth grade schools, um, so he's a good kid. Congratulations, class twenty twenty-three, and, uh, that's it, thank you.
And he has a bang-up bobblehead with his picture on it.
Amazing.
Thank you, Erica.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Um, we will move on to comments from the board, um, we could just do a one-and-done, would just let us know, I'll go first. I guess she'll just get to figure out how to decide, you know, if it's new business or old business, uh, Ms. Erin Trump.
I have a few, but I'll pick.
Go ahead.
Um, well, I'll start with you, Abby, congratulations on the NJ SBA award, you're gonna be last on the list, I, I moved you up.
Oh, thank you.
I wrote it in the last, but no, really, you, you really are such a great leader to the board, and I know since I was appointed, before I was even elected, I've always considered you a mentor, so, well deserved, I hope you stay for another ten years or more.
Okay. Thank you, Jen.
All the rest are really to highlight our students in the district, I think to make a comment of our student reps, the last meeting, they did such a great job. The high school music department and the spring concert was just awesome, a couple weeks, so much has happened these last couple weeks since our last meeting. They, we're just, we have such talented students, and really should be featured and highlighted, outside of sports, we have great athletes, too, as we know. Paul, our student rep, who's not here, he won that John Philip Sousa Award, which is very exciting, we had the art show at the high school, which if anyone attended, it just, our students are incredible, they're, I can't believe some of the work that they make, right, and thinking they're in high school. And we had, what else, the Hawthorne Education Foundation, the Project Graduation Food Truck Festival, and I feel like that's something we've been hearing about for months and months, and then to actually go there and just see Mike Doyle cooking at the grill, and just knowing all the hard work that the parents and community put into it, it was really a nice day for the town, so, all good things celebrating our district.
And I, I really enjoy your, your Hawthorne blazer today.
For the bears.
Yep. Mr. Trump?
Yes, a few things as well, uh, just to highlight, there's been a lot of good activities going on, but, uh, I noticed, I saw on Facebook, I think there was something noted by one of our alums, uh, I think it's Patrick, I don't wanna butcher all of that.
Hold on, hold on.
Uh, who, uh, their team came in first place, uh, with a competition, uh, which was for NASA, uh, which I thought was amazing to see, uh, just NASA, I mean, right? I just, the fact that there's an association with that, um, our peer leaders, and, uh, something that I gotta tell you, this is my second, third time, uh, second time that I've, I've been participating in it with our steam tank program, right, and the Capstone students. Um, I watched it last year, I was blown away, I wanted to, like, invest in it, right, and I thought that was an amazing idea. And then I watched this year, and when I thought, like, there was no way, there was just no way they would be able to somehow supersede what the design was last year, and this year I was just like, what is going on, right, like, these are our students, and these kids were thinking such forward-thinking, right, and, and then to hear some of the proctors and the judges that were on the call, and like, they were like chiming in, like, hold on, don't say any morimos, right, like, you gotta get a lawyer, you know what I mean, you gotta get, you know, a provisional, uh, uh.
Patent.
Patent, I mean, these are our kids, right, our high school students that, I don't know, I was just blown away, I'm, I just, I had to highlight that, because that was really, really impressive, and just to think, if that, they're doing that now, what are they gonna do, uh, in society in the future, and they're all products of, of our school system. Um, and congratulations, Mrs. Goff.
And Marco, just one point, Patrick Olah was part of the first steam tank team.
Not surprised.
That won the Diversity Alliance for Science Award.
Not surprised.
It was a competition they participated in, at the Hawthorne High School Steam Tank, you know, the, the Capstone class, he was part of that first group.
Yeah.
So, to your point, look where he is now, right, so.
It's good stuff.
Go there.
You too.
Mr. Williams?
We're in the midst of, uh, senior events, right, class of twenty twenty, uh, twenty-three, uh, prom being one of them, um, something that stood out was, uh, when Xavier came back from prom, I think some of the bus drivers were there, and, uh, that's something that's unique about the town is that, you know, there, there's the energy, there's a cohesiveness about it, you know, we care, we care about our kids, and it's almost like, you know, it's almost like an extended family that's watching over them, you know, so I think it's, uh, it's a privilege to be part of a community as such. Uh, also want to thank everybody that came out tonight, uh, this elected body, governing body situation works that much better when it's a two-way conversation. Uh, you know, if we, we are a responsible board, you know, we do listen, you know, we do, you know, we're not sitting on our ways, and we try to make it for as long as we've been here, you know, whenever anybody comes up to the, to, to, to the podium, you know, uh, as welcoming as possible, so we appreciate you coming out. We appreciate the constructive and, uh, approach that you have, because that certainly is appreciated, and it goes a long way. Also, you know, last but not least, congratulate Miss Goff, ten years is a decades full of work, it's more than just one meeting or two meetings a, a month. It's always on your mind, especially if you're committed to the work, there's always, I mean, there's, it's almost like a seven-day, you know, we think, uh, that, that, you know, there's something always happening, and even if it's not, it's top of mind at all times, so, you know, besides the time away from family, just the top of mind awareness, that, you know, that doing this job correctly, uh, requires, it's, uh, it's a lot, so, thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Mr. Williams?
So I really don't have anything to add that wasn't already mentioned, so, uh, I'll pass the mic to, uh, to my right.
Uh, next panel, uh, again, congratulations, Miss Goff, I'm sure it will be reflected in your stipends in the.
Yeah, you loved it times.
Um, again, I want to thank the participants this evening, it's, you know, sometimes we get a little lonely up here, there's nobody here, so it's, it was kind of cool to have some interaction. Uh, also, um, let's not forget Hawthorne Athletics Booster Club Brick Sale, June thirtieth, chriswarner@hawthorne.k twelve dot NJ that US, or call nine seven three eight five one four five seven seven, get your brick today.
That's one of the important ones, Cheryl. That was great.
Prepare for retirement.
I have nothing to add, congratulations, thank you, Dr. Goff. Um, I, I would just like to, to sort of bring, it all feeds into the full circle moment I'm having, um, ten years ago, more than ten years ago, when I was led to this board, one of the first big things that I feel the board did was listen to the community and, um, find a way to make a Hawthorne High School lacrosse team happen. And I sit here, and I'm gonna get choked up as the mom of a lacrosse player, and I didn't know then, I mean, he was in preschool, how, how do you know? But, but I just, my point is to the community and to people that sit beside me, you truly never know the decisions that you make up here and where they're going to go. And I know it's a sport, but it's not just a sport, some of our boys, girls have gone on to get college recruitment through this avenue, I mean, it, every decision. Mr. Carr's son was on the, one of the inaugural teams of, of this, totally full circle, um, but it is just such, everything that we do, every decision that we make can really change the life of every student that we have, and I think that that is why we all sit up here. Um, but, but the full circle, um, sitting last night at the Sports Awards, where my son got his varsity letter for a sport that I sat up here, where Dr. Morales, that was my, our ELC, and we listened to the community and the constructive feedback we got, there was a feeder lead, but there was no team, and we, we worked to make it happen, um. It just really is one of those marvelous full circle moments, and, and again, it, it's not just a sport, it is an avenue and an outlet, to Coach Carl's point, not every student can plan a club team. So the, the opportunities that we give them here in this community really can help them to make it to that next level, which obviously is, is our ultimate goal, whatever that next level means, but sometimes that way out is a sport, so, always appreciative to the board I sit on, because you do listen to feedback and, and you, we don't always agree, but we are always respectful, and everybody brings their own thoughts to the team, and, and I mean, it's, it's really, the board has only gotten more cohesive as I've sat up here, so it's really truly my pleasure, um, to sit up here, but the Spring Sports Awards was, were wonderful last night, it was the most crowded I've ever seen that room. Um, it, it, it's a wonderful testament to our community, and if anybody has not had the chance to see the little snippet video that Mr., that Mr. Small made last night, it is posted all over social media, it's wonderful, just gives a little, it just really, like, leaves you with a, a really good feeling about the community. Um, but, again, I, I'm not a Hawthorne native, I, I'm a transplant, so I'm here because I want to be here, my husband grew up here, um, but it doesn't stop me and other trans trans, I'm here from bleeding blue, and, and that's just, it's a pleasure to, to serve the community a decade later, but it makes me feel very old. Um, in any event, um, please be it resolved that the Hawthorne Board of Education convenes an executive session to discuss the set matters pertaining to personnel and contract negotiations, be it further resolved that it is anticipated the executive session will last for forty-five minutes in duration, and that public action may or may not be taken, be it further resolved that the minutes of executive session will be made available upon determination that the board, uh, by disclosing these minutes will not detriment the effect, any right or interest of the board, and the need for confidentiality no longer exists, I will entertain a motion to go into private.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Flavio, seconded by Mr. Carr, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Tuttara?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Flavio?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Erin Trump?
Yeah.
Dr. Morales?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes, thank you to the members of the community that came out.
Thank you.